All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, roll color on the horn, please. Peterson here.
Bora here.
Steichen here.
Nash.
And Olson. With that, we have our agenda, and I will enter, no additions, subtractions, it's all dialed in. Okay, perfect. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Nash.
Steichen second.
And a second by Steichen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we have our consent. Any discussion on the consent? Questions? Hearing no questions, comments, or concerns, I will entertain a motion for our consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Peterson.
Second.
And a second by Nash. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, moves us to number five. Peyton, has there been any request to speak before council this evening?
None received.
And once again, please encourage the public to participate in our process. That is a sure way to help us make progress. Now progressing to number six, we have recognitions this evening, and first and foremost, we have six, Alpha. We have a five-year service award for Sergeant Ross Danhoff with our Dillworth Police Department. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I didn't prepare anything, so we'll go back to my old de facto. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's main event, featuring Sergeant Ross Danhoff. If I'm up here, you're up here, too. Just getting ready for hockey season. Sergeant Danhoff, it's been five years. Feels like ten, so that is fantastic. Sergeant Danhoff's commitment to the Dillworth Police Department and the citizens of this community have been remarkable. It is truly an honor to have someone beside me with five years, wait to get to twenty and then we can talk, but doing absolutely fantastic work when he was promoted to sergeant. Just tremendous individual, and I'm very proud to have you as my partner, sir. Oh, we're going up front.
Dillworth dollars.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, for some of you, Sergeant Danhoff, other ones, Dan gets his five-year certificate and award. Sergeant Danhoff.
Get more closer, please. There you go, let's keep that in front now. There you go. Let's get centered here. There you go. Now you scoot in, Ross. There you go. Good hustle. Perfect. Now let's get the family up.
You're good. Go on, hold it for, come on, let's hold it, Dan, it'll work.
Do you wanna hold it? Yeah?
Come on, let's hold the gift card.
Yeah.
There you go. All big. Three, two, one. Perfect. Good job, guys.
All right.
We're definitely fortunate to have Sergeant Ross Danhoff on our police department. In his short tenure, he has definitely met and exceeded the standards, moving into leadership roles and heightened expectations, not only from the chief, but from council. And we appreciate that every, every challenge we've given him, he's, he's risen to and exceeded those standards. So thank you for keeping us safe and your commitment to the city of Dillworth. Be sure to keep yourself safe as well. Thank you, Sergeant Danhoff, for serving the city of Dillworth. Nice card from, it's outstanding.
Thanks, Wayne, send your office, Ross.
Thank you. It does move us to six, P. We have Resolution 2539, accepting a donation from Essential Health from Loco Days. Peyton?
Yeah, very cool. Essential Health, on an annual basis, makes a donation for Loco Days. This one, we're running after the fact, but that's still perfect enough for us to do a recognition this evening. They did fifteen hundred dollars that went towards youth day activities, which is primarily what we utilized for all the stuff that we did at the swimming pool. If anyone went by the pool on Friday, you saw it was absolutely packed, so thank you to Essential.
Any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 2539.
Steichen move Resolution 2539 to accept a donation.
I have a motion by Steichen.
Second.
And a second by Bora. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, it does move us to six, C. This evening, we have the League of Minnesota Cities' James F. Miller Leadership Award recognition. Tonight, City Administrator Peyton Mestera will receive the award from Luke Fisher and Jen Wolfe from the League of Minnesota Cities.
All right. Oh, boy. Thank you, Peyton, for that. Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
I once had hair. I once wore necklaces like that. Yeah, no, that was a picture. Thank you so much for doing that. That is a picture of me as a senior in high school, leaving the Delano City Hall where I was interning. I'd get out of class for about three hours every day and go to City Hall and spend some time learning from the people there, and then I'd go back to school. The building that I was walking out of was a city hall that was attached to our municipal on-sale liquor store or bar, as some people called it. It was called the Zoo Bar. And so I'd go and work at City Hall right next to the Zoo Bar for three hours in the morning. I'd go back to school in the afternoon smelling like burnt popcorn and cigarettes, and everyone wondered what I was up to during the day. So.
So many things with that going on.
There's a lot to unpack there.
Well played.
Yeah, that was not the submitted, that was just Peyton doing, Peyton does.
I asked for the professional photos from Madison, is what I got.
That's wonderful. So anyway, we're not here to talk about me, we're here to talk about Peyton tonight and to really spend some time recognizing him here in the community that he serves for some recognition that he earned from the League of Minnesota Cities. Now, anytime somebody gets recognized by some group, it's usually helpful to know who the group is, because I think it offers a little bit more significance to the award recognition that Peyton received. Now, you all know us well, but the people behind me probably don't, and you know, the thousands of viewers at home that are tuned into the meeting right now probably want to know who the heck I am and why I'm here. And so the League of Minnesota Cities is an association that represents about eight hundred and forty-one of the state's eight hundred and fifty-six cities. Our largest member is the city of Minneapolis, and our smallest member is the city of Berry. Any guesses on Berry's population?
Three.
Three?
Ten.
Ten? Kevin?
It's a city?
It's a city, yes.
Seven.
Seven, okay. Dave?
Hundred.
Hundred? You're out if we're playing Price is Right rules, because they've got a population of just nineteen people. But as an association, we serve cities that run the gamut, from Minneapolis to Dillworth to Berry and all points in between. And in that, we get to have a lot of interaction with city officials from across the state. We answer about seven thousand research inquiries every year. We handle about eighty-five hundred insurance claims on behalf of our members. Our website had over a million views, and that's all to say that we have a lot of interaction with folks like you. And in that, we get to see the really, the best of the best and the people that stand out amongst their peers. And that's the award that Peyton received, and Jen's gonna talk a little bit more about standing out amongst his peers in just a minute. But I gotta tell you guys, Peyton has been a friend of mine for, I think as long as you've been in the state, just about. And it is really nice to have a colleague, a trusted advisor, somebody like Peyton that I can call when I've got a question and say, how would you handle this? Or what would you think about this? Or what advice do you have for me? He's somebody that I reach out to, and he's somebody that I rely on, and he's somebody that's made a difference in my career and in my public service. And that's pretty special for me to be here to recognize you for that, Peyton. So Jen?
Yeah, thanks, Luke. So the Leadership Award is the league's highest honors for appointed city officials. And luckily, in the state of Minnesota, we are fortunate to have very talented city officials, and every year, the number of applicants for this award grows. And as the last three years, we had a record number of applicants submitted. And through all of this, Peyton stood above the rest among the field. This award, it's the James F. Miller Award, is named after the league president, who was president of the league for twenty-two years, and it's recognition of his excellence in service and dedication to the public sector. Peyton's story is well-known to everyone here today. Peyton comes from Kentucky. All you have to do is say hello to know, just to hear it shine through. Who came to Dillworth in 2014, and he and his family quickly made this home. Under Peyton's leadership, the city has seen transformative change. From streamlining the city's budget process to implementing curbside recycling, launching the city's first area-wide body camera program, he consistently used innovation to elevate city services. Peyton has earned the respect of not only Luke, but his peers throughout the state, and is known for his keen knowledge of municipal operations, his willingness to act and try new things, his thoughtful participation, and his willingness to show up and give his best effort when providing advice and perspective to others. His influence extends well beyond the municipal borders. His ability to seek new opportunities and funding for the community has included safe routes for schools, federal funding for roads, and the city's fire station, and bonding and local sales tax requests for the city. Peyton's nominators noted, from meeting with residents on local or personal issues to working with county and state officials, Peyton is always calm, rational, and insightful. His commitment to Dillworth and our region is always evident and has allowed him to gain the respect of all who have the opportunity to work for him. And now, we're gonna hear some more from Peyton's colleagues.
We can watch this again.
Yeah, thank you.
You have to revise your, Oleman, I used to be a friend.
I'm rethinking some things. You know, this award isn't final until we shake hands here, so just remember that.
When we hired Peyton, the city of Dillworth was ready to transition, to modernize, to become more open, more accepting. And he's led the way in terms of increased communication with council, increased communication with our citizens, greater connectedness between the policies and the people that really exemplify why Dillworth's a great place to live.
When Peyton moved here, he was a member of the community right from the start. He lived in Dillworth. He purchased a house with his wife, and he's not only behind the scenes, but he's also out in front, because he is a member of the community who is very vested in this community.
You know, Peyton's management style is fantastic. He encourages personal and professional growth for all who he supervises.
Peyton is a wonderful boss because he interacts with all of the citizens of Dillworth, and he also is so helpful to staff to understand their jobs and to also have conversations about how to take care of city issues better.
One of the things that Dillworth and Morehead do very well is grow. We live in an area where we deal with extraterritorial areas, and we have growth areas and growth area plans. And so we've been able to work together so well in terms of which side of the street we go on. There is no, absolutely no hesitation in sitting down at the table to work it out.
The man just exudes the right thing: integrity, honesty, loyalty, dependability. If you have an opportunity to work with Peyton even once, you can see the best of all qualities that you want to have in a person leading your city.
Peyton shows up, and Peyton, we'll notice this when he's in the room, he doesn't hesitate to make a new friend, and he has fun. And I think we can get anything done with that. That's a model Peyton offers us.
When we go to St. Paul, our legislators know his name. They know who he is, and they understand his level of professionalism, and they appreciate that. And again, it fosters a deeper relationship and commitment from the people in St. Paul and in Washington, DC, to help the city of Dillworth.
In my twenty-five years of experience in the public sector, you know, I've worked, we've worked with a lot of good, hard-working public servants. Peyton's one of the best that I've worked with. He's kind, he's bright, he's diligent, he's hard-working, and it's just a joy to call him a friend.
Congratulations, Peyton. I'm so happy you've been with us for fourteen years, and I hope you're here for another fourteen.
Congratulations, Peyton.
Thank you so much, and I wanna go down the list here, thanking several people. Jen, thank you so much for coming up, and it was a pleasure meeting you this evening, for all the kind words that you said. And Luke and I have this conversation quite often when we see one another at events. We're not necessarily golfers, but we are runners. So it's important for me to find a running partner anytime we're at an overnight event or whatever, because we get up super early in the mornings, and we enjoy it so much because we get to have a lot of one-on-one time. So when you're out together for, you know, forty-five minutes plus, then we'll usually come back and eat breakfast together, whatever that may be. So it's been an honor getting to know you, Luke, from your, prior to even working for the league, and now what you've grown the league into. It's an impressive feat. So thank you so much for coming up this evening and for all that you do for the state of Minnesota and its municipalities. I have my staff here this evening, or a lot of the staff here this evening. I'm glad we got to do a recognition, police officers and others, and also to the City Hall staff that's here as well, that I share this building with on a daily basis. And it's such an honor to work with each and every one of you. I hope you know that. And I think the world of you for, you know, even though I've been here for fourteen years now, it's been such a. Even though I've been here for fourteen years, or eleven years, however you wanna look at it, it's been a tremendous experience all around. So proud of the individuals they continue to grow and become, and to have a staff that you can work with on a daily basis means so much. And this award is really about them and what they've delivered to the community, to all the city council members. You know, I've, I've been so fortunate. I really haven't worked with a ton of council members since I've been here now for eleven years. It's, we've had a little bit of turnover, but for the most part, I've been very, you know, had a constant steady flow, for the most part. And those who I've worked with, everyone up here, Hawn Deas here, has been tremendous, always supportive of what I've wanted to do. There's been a lot of extracurricular stuff that I've, you know, taken part in, certain on the MCMA board the past year, and having to be out there, be visible in public a little more, and traveling, and no one's ever really questioned it. It's just, you know, we know this is for the betterment of the community and for my professional growth, and they've always been a support system. Chad and Julie are both here when I got started, and thank you both for your continued support ever since I began. My wife is here this evening. She doesn't normally come to city council meetings for one reason or another, but she wanted to show up again to see this recognition. I promise I won't make you cry, unless you want me to. I can say something really quick, I'm really good at this. But my wife, Sarah's tremendous, right? You know, she's the better part of this relationship. I think we all know that. But she is always there in a supporting form and, you know, sounding board for me as well at times. But, you know, I try not to bring a lot of work home, but there's a lot of times that I'm away from home, too, whether it be at a council meeting, Loco Days meeting, planning commission board, park board meeting, whatever it is. You know, I'm a pretty active person and like to be out there in the public, and, you know, and Sarah's always been by my side the whole step of the way. So when we took on this journey now, eleven years ago, who knew what it would bring? But it's brought a lot of, you know, love and laughter, and by and large, it's positive experiences. And to the citizens, right? I mean, this, this is home for me now. I was saying that right beforehand. Jen was asking me where home is, and I was saying, well, it's originally Kentucky, but now I consider here home. And that's really cool to have a community means so much to you that it becomes your home. And it didn't take long for that to occur, and Dillworth is a special place to me. It will be for my entire life. Again, thank you so much for coming up and doing this recognition this evening. It means the world to me, and I'm glad I got to share this with everyone else in the audience and online. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and it's always a pleasure to have the league in Dillworth.
You mind if we get a quick picture with you guys?
However you, however you wanna do it.
Let's do that.
Can I say one thing first, though, too?
Absolutely.
So, again, being just on the crew that hired Peyton, we were, I think I was surprised that he was willing to take that risk on us, but so happy he did. But I also wanted to say, you know, when we submitted the application, I mean, we knew what we have in Peyton. This, this makes me cry every time I watch it, too. So, but, when I, I know, okay, deep breath, but when I got the email saying he was selected, and to know that you guys saw what we saw meant so much, and, I don't know. So thank you for also seeing what we see every day.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Did, did you bring the award, or are we just holding off on that until the picture gate?
He has it already.
I know, I was there. But I wanted to see if picture gate was over, like, are we cementing this for real now, or?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a final award.
There we go. That's me actually, that's me actually receiving the award.
It really happened.
It really did happen there.
Luke, where do you wanna do the photo?
We do it right here, right in front.
Do you wanna, do you wanna have the?
Yeah, I want all you guys in it.
Well, do you want the award?
It's on my wall, I can go right.
Keep my finger over the.
Yeah.
Yeah, put your finger over the lens, that'd be great, like my dad.
Do the filter, then. Do the ageism, I'm gonna look like Luke did in this high school picture.
Yeah, you could all do that.
Okay, so you skipped school to go to the Zoo Bar, which is also City Hall, and you got stale beer and popcorn.
No, I smelled like.
Oh, smell like.
Should I smell like cigarettes and stale popcorn?
Sounds like a great way to get out of your senior year.
It was fantastic.
All right, we should start that program.
It was a wonderful program.
All right, funny, it's. I need to be direct.
All right, say cheese. Run this way. Oh, you all look great.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thanks for going to stop by. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll see you guys.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I see you.
You good?
I'll get there.
All right. So with that. She hasn't been, she hasn't been to many, but she knows how they work. So with that, we're gonna hop down to seven into finance. And seven A is a designation of elders as the official depository for 2025, and discussion of investment strategy. Jim?
That would be me, yes. I'm so glad I got to follow that. Pretty straightforward, so Perry and I have spent quite a bit of time getting to know each other and, and kinda discussing cities finances and just really, how do we, how do we optimize, you know, the, the funds that, that the city has at their disposal? There's really only a couple of ways to, to earn money as a city, and, and one is to collect taxes. The other is to earn, wring every dollar that you possibly can out of, out of the funds that you have for the benefit of all community members. And so really, Perry had me put together just a couple of slides, just showing kind of where the market is, and we're very restricted by statute, and that's good, right? The investments are safe and straightforward, and I guess, for lack of a better word, boring. But that's, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be. It's public money. You want it to be safe. You want it to be available when you need it, and you want it to earn as much money as possible. So safety, liquidity, and yield in that order are the, you know, the GFOA, you know. So safety, liquidity and yield in that order are the, you know, the GFOA, you know, best practices for that. So really this would just be kind of a little bit of a snapshot of what we had been seeing in the market. So a little bit about elders is that we're a fiduciary investment management firm. The only thing we sell is advice. We don't have any of our own products. We don't have any relationships in the form of profit sharing or anything like that with broker dealers. And we are fiduciaries at all times, which means that we are required by law to act in the best interests of our clients at all times. So this is the only type of investment management that we do is serving municipalities. So I know you all had worked with Nick Anhut on the fire station. You have a very good municipal advisor in Nick. He's incredibly capable. Elers has been in that line of business for about the last eighty years. The investment business is a little bit newer, but we manage a little over three, 3.3 billion of our clients' money. And it's all very at will. So our agreement is incredibly one-sided in the city's favor. It is at will. It is severable at any time. There is no minimum amount of time, no minimum fee, no anything like that. And so we really have to earn your business at all times. So with that, really what we are looking at is, we look across the entire market. We don't, we don't care if it's a CD or a US government treasury or a taxable municipal bond issued by one of your neighbors. If it meets what Dilworth is looking to accomplish with these funds, we will go and buy the one that pays the most. And so we hold all broker dealers in competition with each other and, and we act on your behalf to execute those. So this is just kind of a little bit of an example of if we were to look at building, you know, like a small ladder where we have some short-term liquid funds in the US treasury and then some longer-term 2026, 2027 and 2028 maturities. It's nice to have those because you can budget for that. You know what amount of income is going to be generated by that and, and you can know that those funds are safe and available for your use. And, you know, just, I guess we hope long interest rates stay nice and low for any, any future borrowings that you're doing. While, while maybe the short end can stay a little bit elevated and, and have your cake and eat it too there. So again, this is the only kind of work that we do. And these are just kind of some of the reports that, that you can see based on, you know, when, what's your average yield to maturity, which, you know, four point three to four point six is pretty respectable in this interest rate environment. And yeah, that's, that's really kind of our approach. And so just be an expansion of your already existing relationship with elders. And, and we'll partner with Perry. He's a real bright guy, knows the market well. And we'll partner with him to make sure that we're, you know, working on your behalf to earn as much money as we possibly can and not lose any, most importantly, right?
So this would be fantastic. Yeah. Let's focus on that piece, please.
Absolutely. Yeah, save the, save the, bury the lead.
So Perry, would you like to just go over the council, what it is that you're proposing this evening and what you would like to see action required?
So first action I think we need is council approval to authorize elders, obviously. And we've got the handful of other investment partners that we have. But, so that would be the first action. Second is, and I thought, I think I put in the Peyton, up to five million dollars. I, I don't, I went, probably wouldn't need to be quite, that would be the maximum we'd go. And Jim and I have talked and I've, I've got a pool of maybe two to three million I'd like to start with. Because my number one goal on the investment side, other than preserving the capital, and we're really restricted with what we can invest in, is even increasing a yield of thirty. I mean, the fee that elders has is twenty-five basis.
It's one-fourth of one percent per year.
Per year. So, and we're already paying that at one of our other choices. But if we can increase even thirty basis, if I can net thirty to sixty basis points on say three million dollars, there's twenty thousand dollars that I can increase versus just rolling CDs at blah blah bank and just rolling a CD, rolling a CD, rolling a CD. The, so, so that's my goal is just actually to maximize our yield with the risk. And we are very restrained with what we can invest in. And then on that, just on that three million dollars, say twenty thousand dollars of additional income. You know, that, the city needs that. And right now, after I met with Jim, it became crystal clear to me that municipal bonds and government, federal agencies, that's where the higher yield is right now. That might change three months down the road, six months down the road. But right now that is where the, the yield is. So those two items, authorizing elders. And then I think, I think we do state though up to five million dollars Peyton?
I think I was putting the two and a half million is what the, what you're going with for the time being.
Okay, so the initial is two and a half million. Yeah, I don't think I would, I don't have five million dollars right now anyway. But, but, and right now we've got the highest, we've got six million dollars over at Forham. So that's our highest balance with one of our partners.
And our goal too is to be as diversified as possible, even within all of our different depositories that we utilize, not just lock it all in with one agency. So that's maintaining that same approach that everybody done.
It's a little more accounting. I've got one more agency to work with. But again, this would diversify a little more too. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Say we pull the trigger on the first item, is this, is this immediate? Like you're going to start working on this?
I would start working tomorrow with them. Yep. I actually have some cash sitting, some CD, a CD has expired, matured.
And is that, I was, is that, quick follow-up, is that why you picked the accounts you did?
The, the accounts, which accounts Kevin, the?
The one that I just had up there, right? Yeah. Give me one second here. I think it was, is what you're, oh, I'm sorry.
I think that, that's the money you plan to invest, right?
Right. There's, yeah, there's a CD that expired early July and there's one that expires here in a few more days. So, yeah.
There you go.
So, and I could. And Kevin, it's a good question. I could roll this money right back into a CD at the same institution, but it would be about sixty basis points less. No, so.
No, that makes total sense.
And again, it's month, and the other third thing, this month-to-month relationship, it's not a long-term, I mean, I can exit.
We hope that it will be a long-term relationship, but it's, it's severable at any time by you. So you're not locked in to anything at all. And, and these positions themselves are portable. So it's not like at a C, not like buying a CD where if you want to get out of it or transfer it somewhere else, you would have to pay a penalty or a cost or anything. None of that as well.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Jim and Mr. Perry, help me understand this a little bit better. To have an official depository, which is what elders would be, right? Is that, is that required? And what, what, what would happen if it wasn't?
Yeah, good question.
Can you do the same? Can you accomplish the same thing? I'm not saying we shouldn't obviously, but.
Right. I, I, I think just our city ordinance Peyton, to my opinion was like that council should be aware where am I placing that money versus me just deciding, well, you know, heck, I really like this bank or that bank or, or whatever. So I just thought, you know, there's not an infinite number of places I would put the money. I wanted council to know really it's five or six places. I'm not, my goal isn't to have a million dollars in, we have sixteen million plus or minus in cash. I don't really want to have sixteen places to have it either. That's just accounting administrative wise gets to be, that'd be too much.
You'd have another set of eyes to look at, to compare.
Right. And, and the fiduciary relationship with, with elders would be unique, actually for the first time. I don't know that we even have that with, the other institution we have these types of investments is Bremer. And I'm not even sure if they're fiduciary Peyton. I don't know that. So, I mean, there is a little higher standard there to have that fiduciary representation. They don't have a horse in this race on which investments.
It's a different standard between suitability and a fiduciary. So kind of an example would be if you had, you know, two million dollars in a checking account making zero point one percent, that would meet the suitability standard. It would not meet the fiduciary standard because it's not the best and highest use of those funds for, for you all.
And I think you explained this at the last meeting Perry, you're constantly checking and watching and a day or two can make a big difference in what things. But money could be transferred in and you already kind of answered this, one of my questions just prior to me speaking. So hopefully it's a long-term situation, but it can, you can go either way. As often as you need to.
Right. I could become a pain to them and they're like, oh, he's, his hard men costs are too high dealing with Perry's calls.
Doubtful.
Sounds, sounds like you got it covered quite well.
Other questions? So Peyton, obviously we need to have the motion for the designation as an official depository. That's one. And then a second for the amount, and I'm just looking at the number that was on the board and we're talking like two point five. Does that cover everything? I mean, are we going to lose?
That does. We don't normally get into designating, but I felt, designating a dollar amount with our investments. But I felt it was appropriate that since we're starting with elders now to get this kickstarted, that we have an initial start, jumping off point that the council's aware of.
And, and just for a complete transparency, I was thinking like, why aren't we just doing like three million dollars? So we had room, room to add if there was that possibility. Because that was an, it was an odd number, like two point five, one six or whatever the heck it was.
Right. And those were the two CDs. They were, they're just what, plus their interest on them is, it just happened to be exactly to the penny. Total lateral, yeah. Yep.
Are we going to move all of it?
We'll move the first, maybe well within a week or two, I would, I would, within two weeks, I'd like to move that amount. Yes.
It's more than two point five million dollars. Can you put more than in there? I mean, if we say two point five million dollars and he goes, oh, is that?
I think it's something we'll continue to monitor. Again, we don't want to get to removing funds.
I thought that's what he said. It's like, the second, one is the amount. Do we have? Right. Do we have to, do an amount? That's what I'm saying. Like, do we have to do an amount? Why would, why would the amount not match?
Start at two point five and then they're going to make money. So then it won't matter.
Well, I mean, I will make the suggested motion, which is to designate elders as an official depository for 2025 and to authorize the proposed investment strategy.
I have a motion by Nash. Yep. And a second by Peterson. Yes, it's perfect because now they can take care of the money. I have a motion by Nash and a second by Peterson. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I will, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. That part's done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. It'd be fantastic. We look forward to the returns.
Yeah. And your return as well, Jim. Absolutely.
Thank you. So with that, let's move to number eight. And eight alpha is a design update on the new community center. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
But we're starting another. I love it.
We kind of do the opposite. We spend your money.
That's okay too.
I'll get started here. So we have a, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a weekly meeting or every other week meeting with the design architect team and construction manager, monitoring the progress of the community center project. We are now at a time that it's getting close to actually, they really need to start honing in on the design component of this facility, which will involve the council making the determination on the budgetary side, all the amenities, which you'll see in just a moment. They have predominantly accounted for from information, drive from stakeholders, staff, other meetings that we've held, public meetings, and a framework of what this facility may end up looking like. That said, they still need that final level of direction that says this is what the city would like to see and go with in order for us to meet the timeline of getting it bid out this winter with hopes of starting construction in the springtime, really before the end of August, that determination needs to be made. So today's meeting is really to kickstart those conversations, get an idea of what has been put together thus far and to provide some direction, if you're comfortable and ready to do so this evening, for them to continue to design this facility. So with that in mind, I will turn it over to our architectural team.
Thank you Peyton. Yeah, like Peyton said, we, we've been working the last several months here pulling together. You've seen some of the updates, some of what we've been, the conversations we've had with staff members and key stakeholders, community members. And we'll, we'll see that here again. But then there's some additional discussions on what the scale is, what the scope is. And we just really, like you said, we're at a pivotal point where we need to hone in on that, that budget and that scale of project that you're looking to do here and move forward here. First up is that building program. This is pretty similar to the one that we saw at the last meeting when we updated everybody. We added that indoor playground in there, about a thousand square feet. That gets you probably like a, a two-platform structure with a couple of slides and just enough to get the kids inside in the wintertime and running around. Really kind of activate the building, again, thinking about how you can activate the building through more hours of the day other than just on the weekends and evenings. And that you'll see in some of the layouts here is adjacent to the event space. So you could open that up and potentially utilize a portion of all that event space during that time as well. And so here's the, the big question mark, the, the budget. That base project, about twenty thousand square feet, some allowances for site work, plaza landscaping, and then all of the contingencies and fees that go on there. It's about a ten and a half million dollar project there. And we've listed out a few alternates because we've talked about these optional additions or, or, you know, ways to scale the project up a little bit. That library addition of about thirty-five hundred square feet, once you add in all the contingencies and fees on there, you're about one point eight million. The upgrade of Plaza, there's a whole list of items there that you could upgrade there that our landscape architect has offered as options, kind of à la carte. We could dive into that here after we look at this. The gymnasium addition, it's about eight point nine. It almost doubles the size of the building. So it's a significant dollar number there. You're thinking a two-station gym. I think from a programming standpoint, from a, if you're going to do an elevated track standpoint, a two-station gym really is probably your minimum there because then you can program on the weekends. You can have youth games there. You can have little workshops and that sort of, those sort of things programmed in there. So, so that size gym is really what we're, we're thinking that would be usable here. Here, there's an option under that gymnasium addition that maybe you've got this large space now. Maybe you could reduce the size of that event space to two hundred people instead of four hundred. And that probably takes care of most of your stag still and, and a lot of those type of events. So you'd be about half the size. There's a one point three million dollar savings potential there if you do reduce the size of that space. And then that elevated track adds about another one point three. And the, the big gymnasium addition, gymnasium addition. And the, the big gymnasium addition, gymnasium addition and the track, they're different dollar per square foot than the three hundred fifty that we're showing up there because they're larger space or they're built within another space, so they're, they don't directly equate out to that three hundred fifty. And then here's under that alternate to some of the additional things that you could potentially do. There's talk of an amphitheater, pergola, splash pad. The splash pad, you know, that's probably a fully chlorinated splash pad type system. You could dial that way back and just have nozzles that would spray, you know, you push the button, the nozzle spray, and the kids run through city water basically that you're buying at that point. So that'd be a way scaled back version that's still fun. We see that at the lights in West Fargo, they have them downtown at their, in downtown Fargo at their plaza. So that'd be an option there too, that you could still have a splash pad, but not necessarily quite the expense. Site irrigation, we might recommend that anyways if you're gonna have new sod placed out there and just to keep it kind of looking nice and green and lush. Plaza lighting, again, there's probably some element in, in there that you're gonna want to include in the plaza. And then some other site furnishings that they had recommended there. So that's just kind of the list of what was included in that total, like one point three million there of potential plaza upgrades. So the plan concept, we've really dwindled it down now to this linear plan that we had been working for, towards. We had three, last time we came here, I think there was two, and now we're down to one here. At the public, latest public input meeting, this was definitely the favored plan. I think people saw the, the potential for growth, addition, kind of that long linear spine connecting all these different public city spaces. So this has stayed pretty much the same as last time we saw the event space that opens onto the plaza. You've got some meeting rooms that would have some borrowed light into that corridor. And I think the only thing that we added maybe was that playground since the last time we saw them.
I just want to point out for those watching who don't know, north is to the left.
Yes, thank you. It got bigger on the sheet this way. So that's kind of the base layout and all the plans that you'll see now will be a kind of variation of this. So if you go forward one, this is where that library would fit in. Again, we extend that corridor out a little bit, we tie into that library. You know, it could even have its own entrance if you wanted it to, but just thinking of the public nature of the building, it'd be sure nice to use the building as a whole. And, you know, in this scenario, maybe that larger lobby space in front of the activity space could, maybe that justifies over a little bit so it's a little more equal, equidistant to the other spaces. Still very much a work in progress, but just thinking about how that space might function. And then as you go forward here, this is the gymnasium addition, a two full court gym. You have space for that elevated track around, so the gym, it's outside of the basketball courts. You certainly could do that on grade and save the money, but you just run into the issue of basketballs flying and people trying to walk and there's just a lot of challenges there. So that's a big gymnasium addition. We've got, we've programmed in a couple of, you know, maybe four team rooms if you do have some kind of a tournament. Wouldn't necessarily have to have those, but certainly a nice amenity to the building for, for the, the teams. Couple of larger bathrooms because now we are adding another assembly space to the building and then some storage as well. That kind of rounds out that gymnasium addition there. And then this one, this plan is showing that smaller activity space on the right side of the plan there.
I was gonna go back real quick just to this one and maybe zoom in on the actual rooms themselves where everyone's just, you know, we're just assuming everyone knows what's going on in the rooms, but that may not be the case.
Fair enough, yeah. So yeah, this large activity space, we have, you, so right now it's subdivisible into three smaller spaces around that one hundred and sixty, roughly, person activity rooms. It can also hold space for three pickleball courts if you want, or one volleyball court in there. It's gonna have some volume to it, so you'd have the height to do that in there. Obviously making all the surfaces very durable and usable for multipurpose in that space. So there's a left there, there's that playground that we talked about. Potentially you could put some kind of a foldable wall in there that you could activate even just a third. Maybe that, that wall comes out and a third of it could be used for kind of some large motor skill for the kids to kind of run around in. And you can still maintain the other two thirds for leasing out for some other purpose. We have a small kitchen, very similar in size to your previous community center. Table and chair storage, mechanical, kind of receiving up in the top left corner there. Then we have the two meeting rooms. You'll see it's connected by a back hallway to the kitchen, so food deliveries to the room can come from behind rather than through the main lobby space. Again, those two meeting rooms combined are about a hundred occupants, separately about fifty each. And then the, the toilets are kind of right in the middle of the plan there. I think the, the benefits that we saw with this plan were that back hallway especially. I think people saw the value in that, not having to run everything through the main lobby space as, or, or any hallway spaces really. And that main hallway space that runs along the length of the building there, really connecting everything, allowing for some, some of that, what we call pre-function space where people are coming or going. You can have some tables set up out there, registration if there's some kind of event happening. We'd get a little bit larger right in front of the activity room, thinking, again, people come and go, they kind of congregate where they're leaving and going to, so give a little bit of extra space around there. And we also have included a, a reception desk there, that's that little white box in the middle. Thinking as people come into this space, there's probably gonna need to be somebody there kind of directing and helping, probably more importantly, keeping an eye on who's coming and going and, and activity in the building.
And this would have a potential walking path that people could take, and I'm using the word path lightly here, but an opportunity for individuals to walk throughout the facility along the perimeter here and come around. And I believe that was, was that?
Eleven.
Eleven laps, would make a mile.
So it's kind of the mall walking approach, rather than having a designated track, you just walk the perimeter when maybe there's certain hours of the day that that's open for that type of use and certain hours of the day it's open for pickleball use. I think you'd just have to think about programming that space. We have some, a couple of renderings, obviously we're still very deep in the, or very, not very deep, at the very beginning of the design phase here, so. But again, that, giving that kind of main front entrance, getting kind of poking through there, something that's identifiable and some space for signage where you could put the name of the building on there. And kind of creating that train depot again, where, and we're playing with a few things, taking a look at some options here for that outside colonnade, that's kind of under the roof still, but would provide some shade. And also a little bit of elevation off the just adjacent grade, thinking maybe it's like eighteen inches up, a good place to kind of sit and rest. And if you're waiting for your parents, you can go out there and sit down and you're kind of at seated level. Go ahead, one there. This is kind of looking from around the other side from the southeast. This is, that's the spaces for the activity rooms, thinking we'd have a lot of glazing going in there, but still manageable sizes where you could pull some shades down if we need, if you want to pull the, the light level down in there for presentation or something of that sort. Kind of looking up at an aerial view here, looking northeast or northwest from the southeast. Plaza would be off to the left here, not modeled in. And this is kind of looking at it directly from the west, kind of as you come down that existing street that's there right now. And some, some things we're starting to develop, some character on the interior, thinking some, maybe some of those arched windows might start poking through again. Kind of thinking, pulling off of that depot theme, not necessarily looking exactly like a depot, but just kind of giving some hints and, and some, paying some homage to that, you know, the, the train history, heritage that Dilworth has. That's looking back at that desk, maybe there's a little sofa that hangs overhead that gives it a little bit of scale down in front of that desk. So they're not sitting in a large space, but kind of gives them a little bit of more scale there. And then we've got the activity space on the left is, you know, banquet seating. Top right is what it would look like if you had some pickleball courts set up and the bottom right is showing you could fit a, a volleyball court in there with some movable standards. And then we've been working with our Kim Lee Horn, who's our landscape architect on this. This plan here is kind of that radial, they're thinking of the, the roundhouse kind of theme and, you know, so they had this kind of radial theme there. Kind of giving some kind of featured entry, a lot of hardscape in this one, some garden space and trees around the edges. Having that amphitheater off to the side, thinking, you know, some local musicians or you have your trollwood that has the summer programs where the, the little kids kind of show their parents what they've been working on. It could be kind of an interesting setting, setting for that. That type of scale of, 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 of activity there. And then this is the other option, it was, there's a smaller plaza maybe, a, a larger kind of great lawn off to the side there, leading up to that amphitheater. This one was a lot more linear than kind of that circular radial version. I think it seemed like the couple of people that were at the last city in, community input meeting really preferred that kind of radial. It seemed like they were really drawn to that. So that's something we can dial in a little bit more, but either way, I think you get a, a great nice plaza space there. A lot of public space where you can set up and, and utilize that, especially for your loco days and, and other city events that may expand in the future.
That's it.
Any questions?
Could you go back to the, the base bid gymnasium? Tony, I'm just curious, what are, yeah, what are the, like, the dimensions of that? I know you say you can fit three pickleball courts and one volleyball court. It must just be too small for a basketball court, I assume?
It is, yeah, it's.
Tall enough, maybe?
Right, yeah, for one basketball court, you need about nine thousand square feet.
Okay.
The height's probably not as big of an issue, you know, we're planning on being about twenty feet tall, probably to the bottom of Joyce.
Sure, okay.
So you can play volleyball in there, but, yeah, I think the bigger thing is just the square footage.
And so, yeah, and also with the numbers, right, like we, and this is less to do with you guys and more just thinking out loud, right? The taxpayers green-lighted the seven point two, right, is that our cap for the local option sales tax or is it six?
No, how it works is it will bring in five point four, however, it'll end up being over six million dollars once you include all the bonding cost and things of that nature.
Okay.
As well. And just as an FYI, we did have our month one come in and reviewing those numbers and they came in really well, that's all I'll say.
Sure. So we'll have no problem?
Right, we're gonna hit that.
Getting there. I'm just trying to like, there's a lot of numbers to digest, you know?
I think the easiest way of looking at it for us is that five point four plus or minus is half of it.
Comes off the top.
Yeah.
And we're bonding or finding a funding source for?
Yeah, or other streams, whatever that may end up being. You have some things that Don's talked about before, yep.
Before we get accused of double taxing everybody.
Yeah, that's the last thing we want to do. Other questions? I'm impressed with what the, what was presented, like having a, having something on paper, right? A little bit more concrete. I know we had the, the boxes designed up in one of our initial meetings, but like seeing the street view and seeing the concept imagery kind, it allows, for me anyway, a better understanding of how it's gonna lay it out, what's gonna be included, how do, and how do we incorporate something that is going to have the potential to, to draw more people in through updated programming. So I, I like, I like how that is looking and, and, and really future leading. Mr. Steichen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of things, you know, it's getting kind of down to the crunch, but I always fear of building it too small. Because this is going to be there for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, you know, plus years and then it's hard to envision what, what things will be like, but I like the ideas that you put forward and not limit ourselves on just a little box of a, of a community room, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. I think, and, and a lot of it's come from input from Peyton and his staff, and again, those key stakeholders and city input, community input from the, your community members. So it's, it's our, it's our attempt to capture that information and put it on paper and, and provide you with the options to make an informed decision. Like you said, so you can think forward to the future.
I think his initial, his base bid design is also planned for future additions, so. Infrastructure would be there, things would be there in place in the base building so that you could add on to that other building and not have to put in another piece of equipment. It's already gonna be sized to handle something, you know?
Could you go back to the picture and what, what direction would the addition, if it was to be built?
To the north.
To the north.
To the north, with that big gym?
Right.
A double gym would have been kind of?
Correct, yep. That's what we're showing it right now.
If you go to the plan, Peyton, with the gym. So if, if you were to kind of bisect this or trisect this plan into three spots, this is kind of the base bid. We're showing a reduced banquet hall on the right, but that's base bid. This is the library and this is the gym. So as you're looking at that budget and those numbers, that's kind of how that's all being split up.
Right.
If that helps.
Yeah, it's, it's basically all gonna be set up for those additions to come online whenever you're ready, whether it's today or five, ten years from now.
And another thing to point out, I think we mentioned this, but the area that, the, the size of the piece of land this would be on would be approximately four acres in size.
Correct.
Just for, to give you a frame of reference.
So, so here's my question. If we look at this in thirds and we build, let's say we just build it third by third by third. So the, the base bid has a larger banquet hall, correct?
Correct, yep.
So if we can go to that slide, please? Or how are we gonna do, because it's, it's a larger.
Yeah, you would start out with the larger banquet hall and then you would add the library and then you would add the gym.
And how does that impact the lot?
Right.
That's my question. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, what, the, the master plan, when we were looking at the lot, was for that base bid plan and then adding those on to it. So it's still, it all, the, the larger version still fits on that plan.
So the idea is you don't know how many years in the future that could be, if you didn't do it.
But we could go with the larger space and still have those additions.
Correct.
And it would be built to accommodate all that.
Correct.
So the land is there to do it right.
Correct.
Perfect. Because that was, that was one of my more pressing questions because as, as we're looking to set this up, I don't want to hamstring future decisions based on, oh, we're out of room.
The building is placed on the law, property to be able to expand to the north, no matter what option you take.
Thank you.
After the gym, you kind of run out of space.
That's fair. All right, that, that's.
That blasted third pickleball.
Yeah, that third, yeah. Mr. Steichen?
The, if the amphitheater and the pergola and all that's built, that's not physically connected to the building, is that separate?
Correct, yeah, most of that's.
So there's room to the south?
Yeah, we've left, left right around an acre on the south side. And it kind of wraps around the end of the building there, but just thinking about that plaza being right around that acre size. Which is about, from my understanding, where you had some of your activities for loco days out in the field, out in the rail district. It's about that size space.
Yeah, that was one thing that we were so aware, the games to go and all that, the car setup. We just took actually that measurement and laid it over just to get an approximate size of how much room would be needed if that exact space was, just to give you a visual. I'm not saying we would do all that right there, but that gives you somewhat of a visual of what was being considered.
Fair enough, yeah, so over forty thousand square feet, basically.
Was your question heading towards, can you expand south?
Well, I just want to make sure that's where it was, the idea right now, that it could be placed, if it happened, would be, and there's room for it. I know you guys have thought it out well enough, but just so we'd understand, the gyms would, could limit you to any farther north expansion. And then the south could be taken up by whatever or the amphitheater. There's room, there's room for that is what it comes down to.
Hey, Andrew, do you have this right here or any of these, just like on a, to, situated on the lot, like a large plan view that we could maybe see? I think that would help too, give a better visual for everybody.
Should have left him in there.
He's on the landscape.
What's that?
Can you go to the landscape?
Oh, no, it's cut off.
Yeah, that shows sort of like what the property boundaries are, things like that. I think they'll maybe paint the picture.
Last presentation, if you can.
Yeah, if you can stall for.
Yeah, we're good. So. So, yeah, so really the question, well, I think the council knows what it's looking at this evening. And it's, there'll be some component of the base bid, right? That you're gonna be looking to green light, but it's those additional amenities that you have to consider. Obviously, was it safe for a basketball court? That's a pretty big price tag, just to tack on there last minute. But the library addition, so just to provide a little context, how that came about. We were approached by the Lake Agassy discussing a few things and it came up about the potential of us having a new library at this location. And Don and myself, we're always trying to, when we're, we've been working through this, just been trying to think of programming and ideas that will have individuals there on a daily basis, beyond just renting it out, which we've provided a playground now indoors that we think would get utilization year round, potentially pickleball courts or whatever that may be for, or be used for. And in addition, just the actual rental of the facility and all the meeting room spaces that I believe are gonna have great utilization compared to our old facilities. But thinking about that on a daily basis, that was, that seemed to be a natural fit. The executive director feels incredibly, very strongly that our library would have great utilization. Much of that is based upon the sheer number of individuals that have library cards within the community. I can't remember what that number was, do you remember what it was, like nineteen hundred individuals?
Over half the residents. And the library is not interested in just doing a link site, you know, just a small library. They actually want a library here.
And to give you an idea about what the size, this building is about three thousand square feet. If you're just drawing a rectangle around, that's about how large of a space we're talking.
So with that, Peyton, cause I like the idea of a full-time draw to the community center. I, I think that's important. I would like to have some type of commitment and understanding of, like, I don't want to build it and have them say, ah, JK. I mean, yeah, cause plans change, records change, like, and how, how do we ensure that? Because I love the concept and I didn't realize that nineteen hundred people until we talked about it actually had library cards there. But I do like the idea of a constant draw to the community center. I don't, I don't want to build a ten million dollar building that, that gets used on Saturdays. To me, that's an underutilization of, of resources. So I like that concept, but I want to make sure that we have something concrete before we'd start boring. Anyone? Concrete?
Mayor, I think we can line the conversation and have the executive director attend the meeting here.
I would like that, from my, my perspective. Julie?
I'm just gonna go off that, I mean, so a couple of things with that, talking about how much space we have available and, you know, like giving to the library or something. I want to make sure we have enough space, like for when we have our big events. For city council meetings too, that could utilize, like, I think maybe those two medium rooms together. I mean, you'd only get about a hundred people in there. I'm not sure, we'd probably be looking at using the larger space, but you can partition it, right? So we could make it work.
And, and these hold, you said these would hold approximately a hundred people, the meeting rooms?
Combined.
Combined there, yep.
Yeah, so, but looking at the options for, I mean, so we only have right now half the money for the base building we really want, right?
Correct.
And so basically, the additions we're looking at, I mean, from my perspective, I understand the perspective of getting more people in the building and the library space, but I would rather see it used in the outdoor space first to kind of give it, you know, that amphitheater, a little more area to use. So, because once the rail district starts building on those spaces we're using now, we're not gonna have that space. Maybe the water feature, but not a full-on splash pad, so we can get the cost down, you know, but more like that. And maybe the linear one makes it more affordable so that we can utilize the space more. But I guess my preference would be to put the money towards that first, before the library. But I see the value in a library too, but.
I like that perspective, yeah. Kevin?
What's the capacity of this room? Do you know? Pop quiz.
Three, six, nine, twelve.
Figure that out real fast, right?
Forty.
Of this room? Twenty-seven fifty, I think, seventy-fourty?
No, this little room that we're in right now, yeah. Yeah, plus or minus, probably, we'll say that.
Seven hundred and forty square feet? And so, and the, the smaller.
We're mixing, we're mixing up our, our quantities here. We're talking about people or square feet, because there's no way seven hundred people fit in this.
Square feet.
He's talking square. Okay, that's, that's better.
And how many people? What's the square footage of the smaller, the subdivided meeting rooms? Seven fifty something?
Yeah.
So roughly the size of this room, right? That was the point I was driving at.
Yeah, good question.
Doubling the size.
And if you'd be able to.
Open up that to double that, so then that's, kind of gives you a mental idea of how big that square is, rectangle, but.
So, the mayor had mentioned in a past meeting that intentionally or unintentionally, we kind of sold this as a community rec space. So, I mean, we definitely need to keep something in there. So the playground's good to see, the walking path and the base building, all that, I think is really good to have in there. I'm kind of with Julie too about, the library is a great option, but I would rather maybe see the money somewhere else until we have like a solid contract with them or, you know, something permanent. I don't, it's not that I don't believe them, it's just it would be, it'd be better if we had something. So if they did come and talk to us, I would feel better about making that commitment.
Mr. Steichen?
Mr. Mayor, maybe you can't even answer this roughly, but, and I don't want to lead too far into that, but if the library, if Lake Agassy did, if they did partner with us, you know, we haven't had discussions with them, but what, does that generate a decent amount of revenue to help cover? I mean, maybe you guys would, I mean, I don't know how you even approach that without knowing what, what they would even be offering to pay for that, having that.
And I think that's a conversation that we have to have, but just through, through experience, I, I would anticipate, like, no. They would, they would offer library, like, their staff to run their, their, their piece, right? And do programming and things inside of their library, but I don't anticipate that they would pay rent. I, I just, I don't know that for sure, but I don't know too many, too many examples of where they, where they have. So again, it's a conversation that we can have, but I don't, I don't anticipate their satellites, like paying any type of, of lease agreement.
This wouldn't be a satellite though, but they're talking about having offices in there and different things. Wasn't that kind of initially?
Well, I think that you're talking about the actual Lake Agassy, their, their headquarters. That was an initial conversation, you know?
It's kind of moved off of that now?
We, I mean, we don't know where that's gonna go, but we're gonna anticipate it's gonna go in the new Moorhead facility there. That would be our suspicion. And, yeah, that's nothing that we've been really entertaining as part of all this.
And I think that's a good point, Peyton. We, we have not been entertaining any conversations with the regional office staff and we have not been trying to recruit them to come to DeWorth in any capacity whatsoever. We wouldn't do that to the city of Moorhead, a, a good partner and everything with us. So what, what we are looking at is just that, hey, books on shelves and opportunities for literacy advancement outside.
So they would staff it for forty, sixty hours a week, however that works, provide some programming and other opportunities that would get individuals there on a semi-regular basis. And I can't speak to what the numbers look like or how that works. And our responsibility is obviously furnishing the building and getting it to the point, and they take care of the rest.
Kevin?
Beyond the library, has there been any appetite for any private dollars to do anything with the gymnasium?
We stay in constant contact with those individuals, but to this point, no one's committed anything.
To this point, for the last eighteen months, that appetite has seemed to, I don't know, be diminished. But there's still an opportunity as we're looking at. A big part of the puzzle is, is what is the city of DeWorth committing? And, and that's a fair question. And with where we're at right now, we can see the level of commitment from the city of DeWorth and our citizens. It's substantial to the tune of approximately ten million dollars. And from there, we're optimistic that we're able to, to benefit and maybe still attract those private dollars to where we can see the maturity of, of the project, all three phases potentially. But right now, I think we're focused on that very first step and committing to building that base project, where we have the large meeting space and the community center, replacing what was removed with the building of our, our fire department. Are we doing a more public meeting? I guess that's my question. When, we have another one scheduled.
Another one more is kind of a design update after we get through design development and into construction documents, just to show the public where things are moving, some final renderings and that's sort of, I mean, more informative than it is maybe pulling out information from the public.
And if the, you know, if the council's direction is to stay with base bid, try to figure out something with the amphitheater outside, the library is a pretty easy thing to, you know, let's say, a few months down the road, this whole thing works out with the library and you say, hey, we want to do a library. I don't think it's, that's not too tall of a task to add on to the project.
Yeah. Well, it's on the north end, right? That's, that's the next.
The way we're going, right?
We just slapped that right on the north side there.
Or the, you know, we could also do it as an alternate. If, if projects cost, we, you know, and Tony and I visited quite a bit about the costs and the projects and we actually lowered these per square foot numbers to be a little bit more in line with where the market is today. We're getting very good numbers in on the bid scene right now. We don't know what's gonna happen in six months, but I think we're comfortable with these numbers, where we, what we put up there. And if we wanted to do that as an alternate portion of that, maybe the numbers would come in good and you could fit it within the ten million dollars.
Is that the same for the upgraded plaza area or any plaza space that we do? That's just something we could do rather easily if you want to add in as an alternate.
Come up with a base bid portion of the plaza.
Okay.
And then maybe there'll be certain points in the plaza, like the pergola.
Gotcha.
So, and so when we're talking about this, like, are we, I mean, I'm thinking like the, the Fargo Square. Is that kind of what we're aiming for with that, that concept?
I think this one's about.
Yeah, downtown.
Yeah, this was probably, I think it was twice as big as the plaza downtown Fargo. So it's a bigger space, but I think that was where it felt like the community input that we did receive was a little bit more pavement, a little bit more like that, where you can utilize it for multiple purposes throughout the year.
And the, kind of the whole idea behind sticking it in that corner was to engage that whole intersection. There's gonna be a little bit of space on the south side of that street, on, on both sides of Sixteenth Street, right? And then on both sides of First. Third, Third Avenue.
Really the sightline of, in, the sightline into the rail district and walkability into that area, right? And that's kind of the, the vision of the whole thing?
Right, the developers indicate they give us land south of the roadway, so this would be a direct tie-in to that.
So with that, our next step is that final public engagement piece?
No.
No.
No, that's gonna come later.
Later, so.
So really, they're.
Break this down now?
Yeah, till the end of August, I would say, at the latest. You know, if the council feels comfortable with rolling on with the base bid and looking at, and also evaluating as part of that too. So here's the base bid, but getting back to the actual size of the rooms, if you're comfortable with those sizes, if you're like, well, you know, we don't really need two pickleball spaces or, you know, and then cut that down, you know, modify some sizes, you have an idea of what that costs. That's the ten point four, five million dollar, yeah, whatever that number is through there. And, yeah, yeah, exactly. And then just.
For election, he's got an award.
But providing them a blessing, I guess, more than anything to proceed forward with this. I think that's ultimately what they are searching for. And some of these other things that they were both talking about on the alternate side, those don't have to be decided today.
That could be.
But I think, and, and not even today, even on this, but if you feel you're at a point where, hey, let's just go on and green light this part at least, they could do that.
So this is the base, correct?
Correct.
Julie?
I was just gonna ask a question about, I think it's the receiving space and the office. I mean, so you guys have probably thought through this as staff and that's where you think you, we would probably have to have someone housed over there? And in the back of the building is gonna be?
I mean, sometimes the office is not necessarily for the person that's running the facility, but maybe like for computers and like somebody might go in there a couple of times a day and not necessarily sit there all day long.
I think it's mostly to kind of house, a kind of a touch point where they can put in, you know, brochures and pricing information, pamphlets, things that they can go back there, pull out and probably meet with the people as they're walking through the building. A little less about maybe a public facing office.
And I look at it as an office and a half, because that's what the space would be for as far as like greeting someone as they come in, whether that be a senior volunteer or whoever that may be, or if it's something that we have to pay for. But that does bring up a whole other component about staffing the facility. You know, and that's something that we are, we collectively, the council and staff and everyone else is gonna have to consider as part of that. The addition of the office there was, you know, currently, you, you know, if, for right now or previously with the community center, we could unlock the doors from here, people would go over and view it solo. This would also provide an opportunity, maybe if we had to log on real quick on a computer, we could just hook in right there and, yeah, house other things over there.
And what would we, what's the receiving, like, is that?
That's like drop off, caterers will come through there probably with their food.
On the backside, yeah.
Your, your paper goods will come through there, that sort of.
Okay.
So it's probably, there's a storage component in there as well.
How do you want to share this sightline?
I guess, I don't know, you're too far in the weeds.
Did you email it to me?
We don't want the office to have a window. I mean, if someone just happens to be.
Just email it to me.
We'll get you a window.
I'm, I'm not gonna say that. I shouldn't say that, maybe I'll be retired.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're wrong. I don't think you're wrong, because it could be a place where you meet with a client, potential client for, you know, reviewing.
To me, that makes sense.
Renting spaces and things like that. So I think you wanted a nice feeling office, but not necessarily it's the front of the house office.
Yeah, I think that's a little bit undersized, right? I think we had a hundred and eighty programmed in, thinking you'd probably have a little table you'd sit around and, and probably some windows out to the, to the hallway, which would have some windows to the outside, so you have some borrowed light in there. But, yeah, certainly, I think it doesn't need to be off that front main access there.
Kevin? Also, just to clarify, you know, to, to get the people to the office, the base bid also includes like all the parking lot and.
Correct, yeah, that was a, there was a one point five million dollar site allowance in there.
Okay.
Actually, we got some good news this afternoon after I sent that off. That is coming in less than that one point five site allowance. So there is some play there where we could add some of those other features still underneath that base bid.
It's already getting cheaper, I like it.
One point four eight.
Yeah.
Let's put that library on.
Not that low.
I like where you're at that. So I guess first, first and foremost, like the base plan. Council, I mean, what, what do we think? This is our starting point?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we can do with what we got.
Right. Nice to see we have something.
Here it is.
Oh, nice, yep.
There you go. I think that's good for everyone to see, to get an idea of how it would be laying out.
Yeah, that's outstanding.
And I think that library space there wasn't quite as big as what we were, thirty, three thousand square feet or thirty-five hundred square feet. So it does push a little bit further to the north, but there's still room there to do that.
And then that plaza space is that whole south side?
Right.
That whole green space is what's designated for a plaza?
Correct, yeah. And we're proposing maybe, you know, if there is street parking in this area, maybe that, like the plaza downtown Fargo, you'd lose the street parking there and you push it out towards the, the cur. you'd lose the street parking there and you push it out towards the, the curb. And that really, again, engages that corner a little bit more. And if you were to do something like during loco days, you close down a street or two, it'd really engage that corner there. So that's why we're showing it kind of bleeding out past the property line there into the boulevard.
Or, or if we cut off the city's responsibility at the south end of that parking lot, we could let the developer push their own Plaza and they can build it how they wanted to.
Well, then you're on your three acres.
See, we don't need that extra piece. They, the developer can do that.
Yeah. The other thing is if that north-south road goes in, you know, this is, this is showing like there's a private drive in there, whether it comes from the south or the north is still to be determined. But if there were a road that were to go in right to the east here, then we'd just pull off of that for your, your access to your, your receiving area there. There likely, I would assume there may, might be a connection there.
Road there.
If you go down a little bit further on the picture, that road right there on the bottom right is what Tony is talking about. If that connects up through and, and gets to that neighborhood up, up to the north.
Well, those are things we can kind of hone in on towards as the project moves or.
I think it addressed everything but the indoor pool, so.
That's underneath the gym.
Way underneath. Move the floor in.
Yeah.
There's a movie that had. All right, so with that, I mean, we're here looking at, we're, we're, we're seeing that base design. We're seeing the footprint with the parking lot, the potential growth to the north. Really, I mean, that's the update, that's where we're at. And now it's just a matter of saying, go ahead and move forward with that piece. And look at other potent, I mean, and then ultimately what are the potential alternate bids be, correct?
Correct.
So it's a little bit more than a design update.
I, I think I'd like to see, you know, continuation with the base bid and then packaging together that alternate for the Plaza area as one, and then also, like you guys mentioned, your library and gymnasium. Now, is there a potential that we could do a gym without the library? Or, I mean, they're not contingent on each other by any means. Right, we could, I mean, you could. So I mean. Not do any, we could do the library on the other side of the gym, it might look a little. Yeah, well, I guess what I'm driving at is just like the alternates kind of laid out that way. I think the gym is a big enough component that you'd want to maybe be a little more for sure on that one before you design it all out.
The key is you also pay for 80% of the design fee, which is our fee through construction documents. So yeah, if you, if you put an alternate out there, you're still paying 80% of our fee because we do take time to design everything and make the material selections and whatnot.
Okay, then I changed my mind on the alternate. For sure on the Plaza alternate, right? Like we want to, we want to have some, at least see what it costs, right? I think we should talk to Kim Lee Horn and find, find what, what, what can be the base bid so it's usable space.
Yeah, that was.
Functional, but then there's amenities, amphitheaters, pergolas and those things that could be down the road type product.
Yeah, that's, we, when I got their initial 1.8 million dollars, I said, well, what's this, what's the base version? Because that might not be achievable in the whole project. And that's tend to, whatever, the whole project.
What does that cost?
Was that graded and seeded? Well.
Alternate is grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Base bid is grass.
I, I think that, that's a thing. And I say, if we're sitting on three acres and if that pushes us over three acres, I'd really like to talk to the developer to see what they're going to do because that's their land then.
Yeah.
Because that could save us 1.2 million dollars on anything.
Right.
Including 80% of the design costs.
That's right.
Is that your motion?
Well, I, I think we've got a, 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 and I don't know what 80% of designing a library is or designing that space, but I mean, is it within our scope of responsibility to look at those two? I, I'm going to flat out say like $8 million for a gym is above and beyond unless I, I don't see where we come up with that money, but the other two elements I think are, are at least worth the exploration over the next month. And again, I don't, rough ballpark, what does 80% of the library cost?
Well, it's a 1 point.
Design cost, I guess.
About 1.5, so you're probably a hundred and thousand or so, right? He's doing the math, times 80%.
He's Facebooking.
I have not.
He's checking to see how many.
About a hundred thousand.
About a hundred thousand. But it is, I mean, that's an investment.
It's not going to go away.
Going any way down the road.
I mean, both of them, I mean, that's the argument for both ends, for the south side and for the north side. Stopping at the.
Right.
At the basketball courts because $8 million doubles our price tag.
Right.
But the other end gives us at least some opportunities for growing.
And we'd never always, the community center had never always been an indoor facility. It had always kind of been, the parking lot was used for a lot of things, right?
Parking. I mean, outside, outside of loco days, but outside of loco days, but yeah, and we can have that. I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars, what's an investment? Can we, I mean, the plans won't go away no matter what we do on both ends, right? The plans aren't going to go away. There'll be usable information as, as we're going through this. And it's expensive, but if we do it right, it might be worth it. Julie?
Well, I just want to add to that, again, I feel like our focus is here and that's where it should be, right under the community center. But last meeting, we were also talking about developing to the north. And I mean, I just want to, when we think about where we're going to put all the money, where are we going to get all the money to do both at the same time? That's my concern. And so that's why I want to be really realistic about what we're asking them to do so that we're being very honest with the public about what we're gonna, what we really think we can do with the money. Because if we're talking about working on a park to the north at the same time we're doing this, that's a lot of extra money.
Are you talking about the north of the baseball fields?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to take care of the 25 meter target first.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, like, we can't, you know, like, you know, last meeting, we were talking about, yep, let's go ahead and think about developing this out and get some stuff in there. And if we're talking about that at the same time, we're, I mean, we can't pretend like that's not there while we're talking about this.
Oh, I, I completely understand what you're saying. And we're, I mean, because you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but you, I mean, the residential area that was proposed off of Seventh is what's triggering everything else. Right, including like what we'll potentially look at in that part going north. That's, I mean, we, I, I do think we have some time before we need to even start consider, I mean, we can start looking at it, but before we have to put any money into that, we're, I mean, we, we haven't seen plans for that. We won't see plans for that for a year.
All we decided was to take Avenue through
Yeah.
the land that we own, right? If I remember correctly.
Right, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that we're being realistic with our expectations of what we can handle as a city and what we're committing to.
100% agree.
Like, let's not over like, oh, that looks good, that looks good if we still want to do, you know, like over committing to one project. It's going to have to be a, like, obviously the basketball courts are not happening in a year. I just don't think that's, you know.
For my advantage at all right now, like that's, to me, the, the basketball courts, that's way too expensive. Like, that's not a thing. I, I do want to entertain the library conversation. I mean, if we want to have an updated community center, at least have the conversation to see what it's at, to see what, what else we can do inside that building. Because if we're, again, if we're looking at it, I don't want to invest 10 mil, 10.8 million dollars on something that's used for 53 weddings and fundraisers.
Yeah.
It's, it's an underutilization of a resource. If we can do more things within that space, then we can justify the investment that we're making. And if the conversation doesn't work out, maybe we have that first, maybe we have that conversation first with, with the library, to see what their level of interest is and see if it matches up with our vision. And then if not, we can, can we prioritize the alternate list and start with the outside areas and opportunities first and then hopefully we can meet with the, Peyton, is that a possibility? Let's go that road.
Okay.
Yeah, and right now we have more work into the building than we do to try to pull the Plaza plans together. And if you wanted to have a conversation with developer to see if there's some kind of partnership in that corner, that would be good to know if there's something coming from another entity.
Well, the idea came from another entity. I think it's important that the, the finances should also look to be coming from another entity as well. Partnerships work both ways.
Right.
That's fair. Council, just, are we thumbs up with the base bid and let's move that one forward?
Yep.
In terms of the building, building and parking lot, and we go from there?
We owe it to them to move forward on that.
Very well said, Mr. Steichen, very well said. So with that, Peyton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would, yeah, just recommend providing them a motion to that effect, just that we have something on record that you're authorizing them to move forward with a $10 million project. Design of a $10 million project.
Uh, we're going to say, I, council, does, I'm looking for a motion to provide the go-ahead to continue the design of our base bid plan for the community center and parking lot. Does that make sense? Does that cover everything? Peyton, is that what?
So moved.
I have a motion by Nash.
Second.
And second by Peterson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. It's, Mr. Steichen, I think that was, that was very, we, we owe it to keep it moving forward. We owe it to ask the hard questions and, and make sure that we're not overextending us and that we're not. Financial responsibility is still our responsibility. We need to maintain our budget and maintain our, our focus on that as well. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, if you ever need any more conversation, just let us know and we'll happy to come back and visit with you guys.
We will have, you're going to, we'll do a public meeting with the, like, the final rendition. That's, will be our, that's, that's going to be the thing as well.
That's the plan.
Yeah, we can come back as often as you want for design updates and kind of let you know where we're at. Could be a lot quicker than tonight, but yeah.
The mayor's talking about our next public.
Oh, sure.
Meeting, which now you can say for certain, this is what the council's determined, or has, yeah, directed us to do, and this is what it's going to look like.
And it's easy enough to just dash in where those future, what the future may hold.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so with that, it does move us to number nine, planning and engineering. We have nine alpha, we have our discussion slash review of our area-wide special assessment map. Peyton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we're back again from our last meeting to talk about area-wide assessments specifically as this relates to the aforementioned project off of Seventh Street Northeast, a potential residential development, extension of Eighth Avenue, and how those specials, assuming that we go with the same area-wide assessment process that we've done previously, how that could look. Again, just to recap, this is what the existing map looks like. So if we're extending over a future Eighth Avenue through here, those special assessments are, I guess we go over to here, but those special assessments would be those to the north, up to this line, and then down to almost Fourth Avenue, or all the way down to Fourth Avenue, once you get over by the school and by the Lutheran church. And in, thank you.
Did you get a copy of that, Peyton?
He'll email me a copy.
I'll, I'll email you an updated copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in, so yeah, it was just sort of a matter of fairness, I think, that the council should just consider as we proceed forward through this. And Andrew, our city engineer, is needing a little bit of guidance on if you're comfortable with the current map or if you would like to see some kind of alternative, which I'm going to show you here in just a moment. And, you know, with this map, again, to, you know, cover this again, he did put the updated aerial behind it, behind the layers here. But you can see how the city has continually evolved. You know, maybe some things weren't, you know, you just can't speak fully to how the community is going to continue to develop. And now that we have more developmental patterns in place, now that we have a better concept of some of our transportation networks, especially going across Eighth Avenue, I put together this just for discussion purposes this evening. And so how this would be reflected, this would be, you know, taking Eighth Avenue, working its way across how we have shown right now. So those costs would be captured from anyone from 15th Avenue going south up to the current line, which I believe this would be, we'll call it like a imaginary Seventh Street, that would be going across right here. From my van, Seventh Avenue, thank you, from my vantage, this, it, it just seemed like a more fair line to draw in the sense that in the proposed, proposed development that's being reflected, there is no thoroughfares, there's no roadways, north-south roadways going across. And I think that was probably the intention or the thought process at the time when that map was originally put into place. And again, the map that's drawn up currently is just a guide. It's not anything the council's held to, what it has to utilize. So I, I mean, personally, I feel like this is a really good east-west corridor process to follow potentially for, you know, future special assessments. On the north-south front, one thing this does modify a little bit is I remove Seventh Street from a future area-wide assessment. I'm not saying you couldn't put it back in there and maybe split the difference or keep it along the same lines that you have right now. But I had our main thoroughfares that would be specially assessed on a north-south basis, 34th Street, a future Main Street that would come up all the way to 15th Avenue, so it would be split either side as well as 14th Street. Those seem to make the most sense to me as I was working through this. I'm not saying this is right or wrong, but for, but I just think it's something for the council to consider as we look into the future. And, you know, one thing you will see omitted from this is anything south of Highway 10. In the previous map, Highway, I'm sorry, I don't have it fully shown over here, but you can see where, uh, south of Highway 10 is reflected. But I think of a goal of having every resident paying a sp, area-wide special assessment on a north-south roadway and an east-west roadway. However, I think the council really needs to consider just the matter of you're trying to demonstrate assessing on a benefiting basis. So you have to, I'm not saying it's what, how the process we've done is incorrect, but just a, a matter of, you know, you know, questioning if we were ever were to be challenged. If you have a Fourth Avenue corridor going across and then you have someone next door to City Hall that's getting assessed for that roadway that may drive up there once or twice a year. And again, I'm not saying that's incorrect in the line of thinking, that's what the lines are and that's the lines that we've adhered to thus far. But going forward from here, is that the correct way that we need to be looking at this? And so in this scenario, they just do not have one. The county road right now is, you know, fully paid for by the county. And so this area would just be removed from an area-wide assessment. Or you could, you could still pull this down, uh, how the Fourth Avenue is right now and add on to that. These are all just considerations for the council. But really the thing that we're trying to identify this evening or as we, you know, as Andrew develops the preliminary engineering report is how this Eighth Avenue would be funded if we go through an area-wide process. And if this is a better, more fair and equitable way of paying for it as opposed to including residents in this area.
Thoughts from council? Julie?
I mean, I like this conceptually, again, you know, like talking about making sure it benefits the property. The one thing I'm, that leaves me concerned are the properties that then aren't assessed for anything. I mean, how is that a fair policy in town when there are properties that don't get? It doesn't mean that we couldn't create a box for a future 14th Avenue or 14th Street when it would come across? Because I'm guessing whatever connecting wouldn't be, but I mean, we still don't have a. when it would come across, because I'm guessing whatever connecting wouldn't be, but, I mean, we still don't have an east-west one in the area. Um, my other concern, and I mean, I guess Seventh Street is difficult. Now, we may not have to do anything for a long time because there's just not that many properties along it, which we know made it difficult to even do in the first place, which is why it took so long. But I have a little bit of concern about some of those properties that were already having issue about paying for the Mill and Overland, their neighborhood, and then paying for the Seventh Street, and now they're gonna get lumped into Main, which might be coming very soon. That's the other concern about it. I, conceptually, I get how it works to adjust it, but I have some concern that those people will get hurt, hit a third time. I don't know how to fix it. That, I'm just saying that's my concern.
And, and that's, that's all contingent on, I mean, on Ma- on Main Street coming. I guess I haven't, did I miss something in planning?
Yes.
Probably. I mean, there's always been that, that concept, but again, would, my guess, I, that's fair. I mean, that, that, and that's accurate. I just don't know when Main Street is actually gonna come into play.
Mayor and council, one thing you may wanna do in areas where you have the possibility of over two assessments on an area wide basis is put in a circuit breaker that there shall be, you know, more than two per property. So if there's three, you'll have to come up with another way to fund it. Else, you know, maybe extending the district or putting more money in from the city into the projects or whatever, but that is another way to deal with it.
Yeah, I like that.
It's not, I mean, uh, eh, well, and so when we were looking at Seventh, my thought was Seventh, too, is, is that, is that a street where we can begin like having it just be as the, the city's responsibility? Right? Cause it is one of the newest roads, and so as, we'd have some time to prepare for that type of financial responsibility. Um, and then, cause it's, Seventh Street's not on and is that, or we, would that move us more towards our goal of fully funding our roadways and our, and just identify this is one of the streets where it's gonna start? If anything comes up, don't, something happens, it's the city's responsibility.
Doesn't make sense to just pull that box down to the south. Like the old Dilworth box, yeah.
This one?
Just continue that to the south.
Like here?
Encompass all that.
Yeah, and that's kind of how it is right now. Very, somewhat similar right there.
If it was shown like, you know, would I mean, would that kind of put your mind at ease, Julie?
I mean, I would have the same thought you did, right?
Yeah, I mean, and, and still that leaves Little Italy out, right? Because, but what's their benefiting streets? I don't know. Uh, I was just thinking equitable, but again, it has to benefit the property, and that's where the struggle is. I'm sorry, I jumped in.
You're good.
Okay.
Good conversation.
You know, because in, in some ways, you know, I like the idea of mapping it out. And we've held hard and fast to it in the past years, but kind of that idea, well, if you can't have more than two, because I like the idea that Seventh Street could be a city street, but then why can't they all? Right? Because then why the property owners along it don't ever have to pay for Mill and Overland for another house? You know, like, how do you not special assess them for, you know, but then we have the people on Highway Ten who don't, right? Because that's a state highway. So I, I mean, yes, so we could do it. It makes sense. There aren't that many houses there, so it's probably the best one if we were gonna pick one.
And, and it's the newest one, so it gives us some time barring any natural disaster, but I mean, someone might use a the wrong vehicle to move in a house and tear up the road.
So, can I ask another question?
Please.
Just given what you've learned looking at this, you know, since we were talking about it, I, I don't know if most communities stick with the hard and fast like line, or if there's more of that, this is in general where your north-southeast are, and you're not gonna get more than two within a certain period, but that it would still allow us to be like, yep, but this one's not gonna get done for twenty years, so we're gonna include these houses, you know?
Yeah, you could still be flexible with these, and in fact, you know, at the time, in the future, you know, there'll be more areas developed. You can do a traffic study at the time to see who is utilizing this roadway or potentially utilizing it. If you're gonna look at some kind of amendment to the district at that point. Um, but Seventh would, as discussed, could be a good opportunity to say, okay, we're gonna apply our new policy to this. Everything up to a reconstruction, right, will swallow, but the reconstruction will have to be assessed in the event that, that happens. So, yeah, you could, I just wanted to hearken back to that a second, but otherwise, too, yes. It's not hard and fast, but, you know, Peyton and I talked about, and I said, asked a question, well, how many years in between? It seemed like about eleven to fourteen years these are being looked at again. And that's probably about the appropriate timeframe. I'd say a decade, every decade they should be looked at again, or if you have a major project. And then at the time, like I said, you could always have a traffic study done to help justify where you're, you're placing that assessment at the time.
And then look, can we look at designated, or designating Seventh Street, what, like, a city arterial roadway? That we would be, like, and create that classification of roadway and then establish the funding mechanism for that sp- particular type of street?
Correct. Create the policy for it, for the, uh, function, street function that you're going to assign to it.
You guys?
Mayor?
Please.
And not only, and, and again, this also isn't taken in consideration, future, I was also thinking about the future, thinking about our north-south roadways. So at some point, Sixtieth Street as well could potentially be a city roadway. How I have it right now, it's removed, similar to how Seventh Street is. And just, it's a matter of how much you wanna squeeze it or widen it out. That's just how I was processing it in my head. I don't know if this is right or wrong. That's what I was struggling with at all. I kept messing around with the lines and this feels good aesthetically.
Julie?
So, one other piece that I know our part of Third, Thirty-Fourth Street only starts on the other side, so I can see that's why you're not further south. But again, those properties, those businesses on that side aren't, I mean, I feel like that is a tiny area, does, if we're talking about residential in that area, to assess for that Third Avenue, like, is that big enough? But because it helped, you know, is probably gonna get support from Morehead, I think it probably reduced the cost, but when Third Avenue goes in, that's all us. And so I guess I can see it balancing out that way because you're like figuring, well, but they don't end up paying anything for Thirty-Fourth, even though it's, it's north-south.
Very minimal cost that they hit, get for it.
So then the, the next question, too, is what about the frontage road?
On this side?
On the south side.
Yeah.
Because that's ours. And, and what, whose responsibility does that become?
Couldn't do the same thing and just pull that purple box down?
But then do they have Third Avenue and the frontage road, and does that two east-west?
Or could just be the east?
Or does?
But at that point, th- and I, to answer your question, Mayor, I almost added it, but I'm like, well, if it's just these properties right here, they get the frontage assessment already, so it already kind of covers it. That's how I was looking at that. That's why I didn't have it as an area wide assessment, even though it's technically one and the same right there. Does that make sense?
It does. So, I mean, the, the area wide assessment is covered because of the property.
Yeah, because they, that's the only road.
And, and again, logically, that makes sense, because again, if we, do we pull it down and keep, keep it on the same?
Yeah.
Um, so then from that equity piece, like Julie mentioned, and Kevin, you mentioned, so do we pull of the center one, Fourth Avenue and Main Street? Do we just pull that down for that equity piece? And, and I'm hearkening back to old Dilworth, right? Because that's, that's old Dilworth circa nineteen seventy-four.
It's all part of that core.
Right. I mean, so does that take the Fourth Avenue and then the Main Street and, and part that, does that create the equity piece, or does that bring it too, are we concerned about too far away from the benefiting property owner? Julie?
I mean, I could see that if we're doing a Main Street, then like when you're talking about adjusting these, like this is our guidance, but I feel like those that are on the other side of the track utilize Main, but they probably don't utilize Fourth. So I can see them being kind of a quasi part of that.
I'm just talking about south of Highway Ten, not the tracks.
Well, even that, though. I mean, right? Because those south of Ten aren't necessarily gonna go up the Fourth Avenue to go across. They're gonna go down Highway Ten. So I could see everyone like basically south of Ten, whether Little Italy, or they're utilizing Main to get to somewhere versus Fourth Avenue. So I could see pulling them in for a Main Street project, but maybe not the justification for a Fourth Avenue.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, that's, that, there's logic behind that.
Yeah, Little Italy and that area down there, at some point, we may have a box for Fourteenth, extension of Fourteenth, and possibly Twelfth, too, because we're on the hook for, with, you know, the agreement with Morehead for construction of Twelfth at some point.
Yeah.
So that piece is coming.
Twelfth Avenue.
Eventually.
Yes, Twelfth Avenue.
Twelfth Avenue South.
Twelfth Street, wait, what? I mean, I, is there anything, I'm sure you thought about this, but this, can't you just add one more box with a different color, south of Highway Ten for?
And just to include them in the policy, like Main Street, no, no Fourth Avenue?
Main Street and, I don't know. I'm, yeah.
Well, yeah, the thing is, pardon me, the thing is, they're still gonna use Fourth Avenue. They're gonna go north across that light, and then they will go east or west. So there still will be some utilization by them. Granted, Moss will probably go off on Ten.
Right.
Please.
I think I'm comfortable with the way it is. I think we should shift from what our current is to this. And then we adjust it as we deal with the roads. I know it's hard to do that because we've been very much like, this is how we do it, but we're getting to that point where we have to be a little more flexible with identifying who is benefiting.
And another thing, too, this doesn't consider, I was mentioning Sixtieth Street. We don't know what the future of Fifteenth Avenue is either. That's a whole other complication.
And, and there's so many, I mean, with, with both, with Sixtieth and Fifteenth, right? There's so many unknowns. We, why, why engage in a conversation where we, we could what-if ourselves into next week? I, I like the fact that where we exist right now and what is on our immediate horizon with Eighth Avenue, right? And all points in between, it's addressed and it makes sense. I, I also think it's important that we, we try to identify how we're gonna label roads like Seventh and how we deal with that going forward. Um, because that will also alleviate one of Julie's points, like, hey, those houses got special assessed for Seventh and the Mill and Overland, Fourth, and all points in between, so.
And, and I'm not sure how, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm not sure how our state formula will look different once we hit over five thousand. Now, keep in mind, those monies can only be used for functionally classed roadways, which we're in the process of updating that map. And just to give you an idea of what your functionally classed roadways are or going to be, we have Third Avenue. We only, we have Seventh Street from Highway Ten up to here. We have Fourth Avenue running all the way across Fourteenth Street up to Fourth Avenue, and also, uh, CR Nine and Thirty-Fourth Street, uh, currently as well. So that's something else that we will continual, continually monitor as we go along. So there, it's gonna open us up to some more funding, however, that will also change our local street funding formula as well. So, you know, a lot to, that could evolve from this. I feel comfortable from the, with this, uh, from the east-west perspective, and I think the hesi- hesitation with it, uh, on the north-south is just that we recently did Seventh Street, right? And, you know, and so that kind of is in the back of everyone's mind right now, in the back of my mind, too. By the time Main gets constructed, maybe that window has expired, but I think that was a twenty-year bond, if I remember correctly, uh, for the Seventh Street project. So maybe that one's already off the books by that time, and then it would make us feel a little better. I don't know.
Yes, one more question.
Please.
So, I, just the Eighth Avenue, Thirty-Fourth Street box. Thirty-Fourth Street isn't ours up there.
Correct.
Yeah. It's in the city of Morehead, the entire roadway.
Right. So they don't have a, so technically, is it, I don't know that we have a north-south for them right now either then, right?
Do we have a financial responsibility?
Well, there's a strand of cost sitting there, so, you know.
What?
In, in the maintenance agreement?
What Julie's asking is, are we allowed to area wide specially assess property that's not in, within our city limits? That's really what you're asking, right?
In the future. I mean, right now, it's in our agreement with Morehead, but.
Yeah, we have it from a road maintenance perspective, but are you allowed to specially assess on an area wide basis? Feel pretty confident that you can. Let's just say it like that.
Right, I would say that, at that time, it, it may be such that we will defer it until we have development in the area, but once we can, we can extend water and sewer up there in street systems, yes, we can probably apply those. You know, there's confidence in that, but then so much time, as you only have so much time in a larger sense, or for specials to be able to apply them. And throw one more caveat out there, so staff doesn't get banged in the head at some point. There has been some discussion about running forth over in a little piece of Sixtieth south of Ten, paving that with, in conjunction, sort of with the community center project. That has been sort of a, just a loose discussion, but I just wanted to lay that out there, too, so that everybody's aware of that.
So, as we look at that, and you, you mentioned, like, increase in state funding based on functionally classed roadways, right? And we have partially, like, we'll just use Seventh Street for an example. You said Seventh Street up to Fourth Avenue is a functionally classed roadway, correct? Is the whole road not built to the same standard?
No, it, it has to connect up with another functionally classed, uh, roadway. And, so where Seventh Street terminates up here, Fifteenth, it's just a gravel road right now, so it doesn't need that. Once Fifteenth, once that gets extended over, then at that point, all of Seventh Street, we can get included then.
Okay, so that makes sense. Now, riddle, riddle me this one. If we should happen to bring out Fourth Avenue to Sixtieth, and Sixtieth runs south to Highway Ten, is that a functionally classed roadway?
We have to get it designated as such, but it's, that was our understanding when we were working through it with them. Uh, that would be our intent. We're going over all these future scenarios with Metro Cog.
Head scratcher, and that one is, do you simply just put on an asphalt mat? You know what I'm saying? Not invest in a heavy ten-ton road at this point because of the cost. Maybe at some point in the future, and then when would that be? And then you would look at it, possibly adding that into the system at that time.
Huh, we got a lot going on. Gonna build a community center, but gotta make sure we have roads to get there, yeah?
And, and as eight, and sorry to, you know, not complicate it, but complicate it a little more. Uh, and Eighth Avenue, too, would be a functionally classed roadway as it develops. So right now, it can, it's, this is obviously one of our more heavily trafficked roads in the city, uh, but it can't reach it until it hits County Road Nine right there, matches up with another one.
Sure.
Then at that point, it would be subjected to more.
Tell me what kicks in when that happens?
There, over five thousand in population, you receive municipal state aid monies that can go into rehabbing roadways. But always forewarn everyone, it's not like a windfall of money. It's not like you're gonna start bringing in thirty million a year for it. But it does help defray some of the cost on our roadways or right-of-way improvements. And I'm anticipating that to kick in probably in a couple of years.
The thing about that, too, is you will possibly be able to do some advanced construct. In other words, dig in the future dollars for a larger project that you're doing today.
Peyton, do you have enough information to move this forward? Get this into policy language that makes sense?
Yeah, and, and again, this is, I, I like, it's more, it's not really adjusting our policy as much as just a suggested way that we would operate. So I just think, me reporting So I just think, me reporting back to Andrew, if the council is wanting to go this route here, that 8th Avenue would be within that rectangle, if that's what I'm understanding. Within this, and for us, our existing map with all the old lines on it, this will be the one that we at least reference for the time being. I think it's more of just a reference that we utilize instead of a set policy you have to do this. And, which our special assessment policy even says, the council reserves the right to adjust and modify as it sees fit. So I think this would become our main document. Is there any other adjustments, like with south of Highway 10, anything like that, that you want to do? Or just keep it like this for the time being, and we can review those as they come about?
I like this, and I, I think, yeah, I like this, I guess, for now, as long as we keep, have that caveat in there that we can adjust it as we need. And I don't like the idea, like Julie said, having people hit more multiple times. So if we can put something like that in there, I think that's fair to everyone. Nobody needs to be assessed three times for something that is not equitable or fair to anybody.
Are there any other questions? So with that, do you want a formal mo-?
I think so.
Formal motion to adopt this for our, for the reference?
To serve as our reference guide material for our special assessment policy.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to use this as our guide.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Nash and a second by Bora. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Some excellent conversations. I mean, really keeps us focused on the things that we want to do, but at the same time, we have an obligation to do things that we need to do as well. Infrastructure's not pretty, but it does, it does help the city function. So we are moving to number 10, we have council members, we have council members' concerns and committee updates. Around the horn, please.
Got a lot going on with that. Congratulations again to Sergeant Danoff, his five-year commitment to the city of Dilworth, we appreciate that. Quick recap from Loco Days, and please feel free to, to add to this list with your own comments. But, you know, specifically, I was involved with Firehouse Friday. We served more people than we ever had in the past, so it was somewhat of a record-breaker. People really came out and helped us out. For the free will donation to Fire Prevention Week, normally, we would expect to see about $350 to $400 get put in that boot. There was $1,024.80 in there this year. So that money will be donated to, to the relief, to be put forward for Fire Prevention Week, where we'll utilize that in October. Kids Day was a blast. I had my little one up there, well, both of my little ones, but the little, little one had a lot more fun. And the music, I, I feel like maybe, maybe I don't appreciate the conversation enough, specifically between Dave McLaughlin, or Jim McLaughlin, rather, and Perry, but I really do enjoy the music up there. It's, it's all, it's very good. So hats off to everyone who takes time out of their schedules to come and entertain us. And also, I'll let Amber speak to it, I didn't go to the all-school reunion, but I saw that she did. So it looked like a good time, and I had prior obligations. Hats off to numerous, our summer baseball and softball programs in this community are second to none. I think the senior Legion team is, they've made it to the state tournament after a gauntlet of a weekend for them. And then also, off the top of my head, I know that the 9U baseball team took second in their state tournament, and the 13U softball team, I think, also took second place in theirs. So congratulations to them on their success. I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate Peyton, once again, on his, is it Jim F. Miller Award?
James F. Miller Award.
Jimmy Miller, once again. Congratulations, sir, well-deserved. And thanks to everybody for all your hard work. That's all I got.
Um, yeah, like Kevin said, we got a lot going on here. Loco Days, amazing, everybody did a good job, the committee, it was a good time, my kids enjoyed all of it. And it was really fun to see all the businesses in the rail district kind of supporting each other. I seen somebody, you know, asking somebody else for ice, and they were helping them out, and just everybody seemed to work together to make it amazing, and it was fun to see that part of it, too. The back stuff that nobody really gets to see, so that, that was cool. Let's see, what else did I have? Oh, Atlanta Teen Night, I can't wait for this, this looks like it's going to be fun. The all-school reunion was a good time. We were hoping for a little bit more people to show up, but it was still, still good. And then Peyton, congrats. I've worked with you on Park Board, and I know that you're dedicated to making the city better. So it's good to see other people acknowledge that. I knew when Luke came up to me at one of the league events and told me how great you were, that we had something special here, so congrats.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Mr. Steichen?
Yeah. Peyton's going to get tired of hearing, "Congratulations again, Peyton," but congratulations Peyton on your award. It was fun for those of us that could attend in Duluth to see that. And Peyton was such gracious in accepting it, he thanked everybody, everybody around him. So, I mean, that's nice to see, and, but it's none of my doing that got him his award. I mean, it's, he's such a dedicated, but help from everybody does make a difference, so. Pretty exciting. I've got to meet a lot of the league people over the years, and they've always are so nice. Mr. Fisher and, and Jim, and everybody else, I mean, it's quite a staff down there. So it's fun to see him come up here for this, and I know they had other things in the area as well, too. So thanks again for what you do for the community, Peyton. Pass on the thanks to your sergeant at Danoff that got his award. Good to see recognition, it's always nice to see. Loco Days, I went to a lot of the events, it was, it was fun. Heard Mayor and Lisa and McLaughlin on the KFGO. They all do well when they promote Dilworth and talk on the radio, speak on the radio. So thanks for taking time out of your day, Mr. Mayor, for, for that, so. The, like Councilmember Peterson said, the huge turnout at the fire hall. Mr. Peterson did a great job running everything and keeping everything moving, and, and... So everybody, whoever, it always gets to be more work than a person ever imagines putting something on. So thanks for, for everything you've done over there. So it's great to see a great turn, fantastic to see a great turnout. Earlier in the week, they had retirees show up. I didn't know a lot of the retirees, but a lot of old firefighters did show up for tour and some food, so that was good to see. I did attend a climate coalition on, last week, and they have some ideas. I've always got these ideas, what we can hopefully apply for and get for helping out, making the community center more efficient, and they're opening up some more grants. And I'm guessing the architects already know this information, but if they do or not, I'll still pass it on. Peyton and I, we were at a Improving Delivery Service League, one of the policy committees, so that's just getting started, two more to come, and lots of interesting ideas that people are proposing. A lot of them will never get discussed, a lot of them are ongoing discussions, that'll probably always be ongoing. So they figure out what's worthy of their time and what's going to probably impact many communities. So it's fun to see, and they'll start bringing in speakers that'll address certain, certain ideas, certain topics, certain subjects. So we'll see what happens in the August meeting, so. And I have one thing to pass on here. This is a note sent to our fire chief, and I'll just read what he writes. "Good evening, Chief." I know it's addressed to this whole department, so. "I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to all the guys who responded to my car fire on I-94 tonight." This was sent on Thursday, July 24th, if that's the day, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but "I personally thanked everyw-" I'm not sure if I personally thanked everyone for responding and giving up their home and time with their family. "I sincerely appreciate it, and I apologize if it even happened." From a mayor's perspect-, this is a mayor from Freeport, Minnesota. "From a mayor's perspective, I sincerely appreciate everything you, you and your team did and how professionally they worked. Please relay my gratitude. Thank you sincerely." Mike Ebslog, Mayor of Freeport, Minnesota. And I think Luke Fisher and I had spoken to him.
Yeah, pure irony, he was, they even went to Freeport, and he actually had coffee with the mayor today, so it was just a pure irony.
Right, so.
And he had mentioned that to Luke, you know, that he was coming up to Dilworth, and Luke was telling him that, and he's like, oh, let him know to thank the fire department for me.
So, just going to pass that on to the fire, the fire team out there, and that your, your efforts were doodly notified, doodly recognized by a mayor of Freeport. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Steichen. Nash?
So, in addition, you know, again, to, thanks to the League of Minnesota Cities for coming, doing the presentation, congratulations to Peyton. But I also want to say thank you to all our staff that put in the, like, effort behind to make that production happen and to, like, do interviews, and it, it took a lot of work to get that figured out so that we had this great product that was on the screen, and it makes me cry every time. So they did a wonderful job, so thank you all for taking time out of your day to come and be a part of that. And also, thanks to the staff and our volunteers for Loco Days. I mean, from closing the highway to making sure traffic is in control. I know, and, and everything before, and to taking down afterwards, because everyone, like, leaves, and then it's all left for, you know, everyone back here again to kind of put back together again and remember where we left off. And so thank you for all those extra efforts you all make, and making sure that community celebration is as amazing as it was. Beginning tomorrow, police department's fully staffed. Yay! So, and then, let's see, I think Chief Rossen's going to grill some burgers that might be somewhere around, I don't know what you're going to come up with this year, because what was it, four-plus pounds last year during the burger cook-off, the burgers? So I can't wait to hear what he's got planned to come back and... Meatloaf, there you go, it's a meatloaf, right? And then he'll also be hosting a small-town chiefs meeting this week, too. I, I like to see that connection with the other cities, so thank you for doing that. And the other piece, I think, you know, as you're talking about climate and things like that, I noticed at the fire hall, there appears to be like an electric charger, is that right, in the parking lot?
Two or three of them, I think, for sure.
And so I don't know if that's open to the public or how we, but anyway, I thought that was interesting. I did not realize that was part of it, and, you know, seeing that there was, I don't know, just... All the little things that we didn't even realize we were getting as part of the fire hall or something, so that's kind of cool.
Thank you, Julie. Peyton?
Thank you for all the congratulations towards myself. Again, it's more about the staff and everything, and it's getting, I feel a little uncomfortable. Say my appreciation as much as I have, but it comes from a genuine place. I'm blessed to live here, blessed to work with amazing individuals. I don't want to get to naming anyone, because I'm afraid I'll miss someone. And there's so many impactful people that have come across my life, and since I've lived here. So thank you to everyone. There's a handful of impactful people as well that make our town festival, Loco Days, what it is. And this is all done primarily behind the scenes, as Julie mentioned. It's tremendous having the business connection with those in the rail district and across the entire city that make it possible. And it's a fun event, even when we had to remove the games and a few other audibles that had to be made due to the weather. We were able to persevere, and it's like a well-oiled machine. So again, it's just a core group of a handful of individuals that really are the primary decision-makers, but they all do a tremendous job, so thank you to the committee and anyone else that played a part in that. Lastly, I wanted to make note of Cottonwood Park, and, you know, we've discussed about renting out the facility. We talked about that at the last Park Board meeting. And you can thank Angela for brokering a deal with Community Ed. So now anyone who wants to reserve the field can do so through Community Ed. So we'll be getting out the word about that a little more, but that's, I think, officially official now that you can go on there and actually reserve it. So I think that hopefully accommodates everything that we were trying to accomplish. We want to have a field that can be utilized, because it's something we're proud of, and we're excited to see the possibilities of it. That's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Peyton. Don?
Nothing. Thank you.
I ask because Don and I attended the Cass Clay Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness last week. Had an opportunity to meet with fellow public officials, leaders in Cass and Clay County, across the board, to really address the issue of homelessness. And one of the, one of the simplest takeaways for me, when they asked us, they, because they asked, like, what, how do we solve homelessness? And there was 100 people there, and there was 300 ideas about how to do it. And when they just simply said, "We need to build more houses," I was like, yep. That is, that is so very true. I was, it was, honestly, it was a great, great morning, great conversation, and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing how that, how that progresses. Also had the opportunity to meet with Mayor's Dispatch, and Peyton has graciously agreed to take the administrative lead along with the cities of Holly, Glendon, and Barnesville, and really look at negotiating our next contract with the county, and really working together to readjust the, the financial commitment of, of the small cities. So looking forward to that, moving us all in lockstep. Those, those are some fantastic things. And, and looking at it, you know, we're talking about everything that we have going on with our special assessment policy with community center, with 8th Avenue, with the park on 8th Avenue, with the Heartland Trail. We have a lot of things going on, and, you know, we've congratulated Peyton quite a bit. One of my favorite memories in the military is when someone received an award, got an accomplishment, or did something really outstanding, much in the same way Peyton has done with his tenure in Dilworth. He has since received his award, and then in that military fashion, really, we're just told to get back to work and usually given the worst job possible. So congratulations, Peyton, now get back to work, we've got things to do. And, and I say that knowing well, knowing full well that you'll continue to guide the city and, in the manner in which we've become accustomed and, and set the standard. So City Hall follows your lead, police, fire, maintenance, they follow your lead, and our employees are given the opportunity, much like Sergeant Danoff, to do great things. Really, that has become the standard under your tutelage, and I'm, I'm thankful for that. And I'm also going to say, lastly here, thank you to everybody who made Loco Days work. Because like you said, Peyton, I'll forget somebody, because there are a lot of bodies that makes it a fantastic run. We have something going on from Tuesday to Sunday. There's great attendance, and there's a wide variety, and, and thank you doesn't seem to be enough. But, at the end of it all, it's the only thing I can say that really encompasses how I feel about all of the effort. So, if you're here, or if there's four of you watching online, and you, thank you all very much for contributing to the success of our local festival. And with that, it does move us to eleven, and I will entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Is that moved?
I have a motion by Nash.
Second.
And a second by Peterson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And let's take a five-minute recess before we go into closed session, I need a drink of water. Can we do that? Let's go to recess.